I'd like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Tuesday, February 18th to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first section of the agenda is Proclamations and Presentation. The first item under that category is the AWC Retro Refund Presentation. I'd call it Mr. Peter King, the CEO, and Mr. Brian Bishop, the Program Manager of the Association of Washington Cities.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Peter King, CEO of the Association of Washington Cities, members of the council. I'm here tonight to thank you for your participation in the AWC Retro program, but more importantly, to recognize the great work that the city has done and the staff with safety programs. We completed the 2016 year, and I'm happy to say that the city is receiving a refund of about $51,000, recognizing the work that you have done with worker safety and claims management. Before I move into the details there, I did want to just refresh your memory, and for those who are maybe not as familiar with AWC as others, about what we do. We're about advocacy, education, and services to all 281 cities and towns in the state. You're probably familiar with our advocacy program. The legislature's in session now for the short session. You all receive our legislative bulletin on a weekly basis, action alerts, and I hope we're keeping you up to date on what's going on down in Olympia, and feel free to contact us if you have any questions there. We also have education programs. Some of you have participated in those. We just finished up a mayor's exchange last week in Olympia where we had about 50 mayors in. We do education on an ongoing basis to assist you all and your staff in doing the best job that you can at the local level. Services are what we call our member pooling programs. The retro program is one of those. We also have an employee benefit trust program, a risk management program, a drug and alcohol consortium program, and others that are pooled programs that cities around the state have the option of participating in if it makes sense to the individual community. The next slide is just a quick overview of a number of different services and programs that we offer throughout the state. Handbook for new council members. We had 400 new city council members and mayors elected in November, so we're doing training there for newly elected council members and mayors. We have a job board where over 200, on a regular basis, 200 jobs are available where you can search for talent and post those jobs. We have a data portal, which the one that's included in your packet shows a snapshot of data available on transportation benefit districts on a city-by-city, TBD-by-TBD basis, but we have a number of portals available on different data. We're finishing up one on fish culverts so that we can demonstrate the need for additional funding in the culverts area. A variety of services available to you. I hope that you're taking advantage of those. We also just finished up a strategic plan. I won't go into any details, but our Board of Directors, which is 25 city officials throughout the state, did spend some time coming up with a new focus for us, so that's included, but we're committed to continue to provide services to all ranges of cities. So, about the retro program, let me spend a minute discussing this. In our state, workers' compensation is managed by the state, but they also allow like employers to gather as a pool, do worker safety programs, loss control programs, and then also gather as a pool, and if the claims experience of the group is better than average, then there's an opportunity for a refund, and that's the year that we just closed out in 2016. As a group, the 110 cities that participated in that program did better than average, and therefore refunds were made available to those higher-performing cities, and certainly Lakewood was one of those. So, it's about training programs that we make available to the city. On-site safety audits. We have a program called Work Safe Employer where you can meet certain standards, again, to make sure that your employees are safe and working safely. We do claims management, so we work with your staff on claims resolution and the staff at Labor and Industries. We have a very active program to encourage employees to get back to work in light duty, and then we also manage protests and appeals on different claims that come forward. So, that's the bulk of the program. The program itself began in 2004. Lakewood joined in 2010, and in 2016, which is the year that we just completed, it's a three-year lag, we got a refund, the largest in the program's history. There was a $2.1 million refund for the participating cities. The board in this program decided to send out 1.5 million back to the 115 members, and Lakewood's refund was just over $51,000. So, it's one of the largest refunds of the participating entities, again, reflecting the commitment that you've made and the experience that you've had. So, in concert with your management team here, you have a number of executive leadership meetings that talk about employee safety, employee injuries. We work with you to implement best practices for safety, risk management, OSHA reporting, as I mentioned, very active light-duty program and encouraging employees to get back to work, and then the Work Safety Employer Program. So, it's one of several programs that we have, and really my purpose in being here tonight is just to recognize you, bring some good news, not only from a financial perspective, but also the fact that you're taking care of your employers and your employees, and that's really a critical mission for all of our cities in the program. Happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. King? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, Mr. King, I really do appreciate your taking the time to come to give us this good news in person rather than just sending the check, but the things that goes on, and I had a question about this program in light of the fact that AWC is somewhat unique amongst the associations of cities and around the 50 states in that AWC is the only or one of the only few that have all of the cities and towns in their state as membership, which I would tell you is an indication that everybody's getting something from being a part of AWC. You know, you've got, doing a masterful job of serving the Seattle's and the Omacs and the Lakewoods in between, to be able to go and do that. So, you know, I appreciate that the fact that although AWC has got a pretty lengthy history, that there's constantly new programs. This is a program that's new this century, okay, and other things that are going on, and we ask you to commend your staff down there, particularly the ones that deal with the things other than advocacy that operate very much behind the scenes, but that make a real difference for the day-to-day people in cities.
Well, thank you. I didn't neglect to introduce my colleagues that are with me tonight. Carol Wellmuss oversees all of our member pooling programs, so if you have specific questions about those, Carol's with me, and then Brian Bishop heads up our retro program, and he's the day-to-day manager of that. But you're right, we have 281 cities. We're a voluntary organization, a nonprofit. We consistently have 281 members, so thank you for your continued membership, from Seattle with over 700,000 to Krup with 50, but interestingly, about 65% of our cities in our state are less than 5,000 population. So, we are providing programs and resources. The last I checked, we had 257 of the 281 cities participated in one or more of our member pooling programs. So, our Employee Benefit Trust is our largest that provides employee benefits to a variety of employees around the state, but I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to personally thank you for the check. It's always appreciated, and for all the hard work you do trying to stop some of the nonsense in Olympia that's trying to take away our ability to make local decisions in zoning, for example. So, thank you very much for all your efforts. We now move to the police chief's commendation awards. Chief Zarl.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, council members. This is the time that we've set aside to present a few awards from last year. As you'll hear, coincidentally, they're all lifesaving awards, and all very well-earned in some real, I think, tremendous acts of heroism that is probably deserving of even more, but it's, you know, I'm humbled to lead them and to be able to present them with these awards. We have four different groups that are receiving awards for four different incidents. I'll call them up, one group at a time, have a chance to take a picture with them, and then at the very end, if it's okay with you all, have you all come down and take one picture with all of the award recipients. So, if we can start with Officer Nile Teklemarium, if you could come forward. Also receiving this award would be Officer Grant Bory, who has since left the department to become a firefighter. There's no accounting for taste, I guess, but... This incident occurred on February 2nd of 2019. Nile and Grant responded to a report of a shooting outside of a gas station in one neighborhood in our city. When they arrived, they found a man that had been shot several times, was still alive. They quickly jumped in and performed lifesaving measures to include, you know, stopping the bleeding and just doing what they can to keep the man alive, and they did just that until the fire department arrived, and they were able to apply more advanced lifesaving techniques and transport him to the hospital, and he lived. And this is somebody that was, again, shot multiple times, and had it not been for their quick response and their quick action and just performing what is a medical function, he likely would not have survived, and I can tell you that is just a, it was a quick mindset. Nobody had to tell them to do that. So, for their lifesaving actions, Nile will be receiving the lifesaving medal. Okay, next, if I could have Officer Noah Dear and Officer Jeremy James come forward. Officer Dear and Officer James responded to a call in June of last year. Again, this was another shooting where there was one person inside his mobile home actually shooting through the door at residents that were in the other part of the mobile home, and shot at least two people. When these officers arrived, it was still a very chaotic scene. They knew that they had victims that had been hit, and they also knew that there was somebody that was potentially still armed and inside and still shooting. They quickly went in and extricated one of the victims that they could reach, got him outside, got him into a car, and were able to drive him away to where the fire department was staged and waiting to transport him to a hospital. And even in doing that, they were able to apply medical aid to the victim's wounds to further his chances of survival, and because of all this, they were able to save this person's life. So, for these heroic actions, Noah and Jeremy will be receiving the lifesaving award. Next up, if we could have Officers Daniel Pyon, Jared Pingel, and Josh Beecham come forward. This lifesaving award is presented for an incident that occurred in November of this last year where all three responded to reports of a man that had just been shot multiple times outside of a bar here in Lakewood. Upon arrival, they had to do multiple things, not just assess everything that was around them with a bar full of people, somebody that had been shot, not knowing where a suspect might be, but they also were concerned about the condition of the victim. They all three jumped in with all this going on around them and applied tourniquets and bandages to the wounds and got this person stabilized and were able to secure the scene long enough or well enough for the fire department to come in and take over the lifesaving efforts. And of particular note, is an email I received afterwards from West Pierce Fire and Rescue, talking about their efforts and the quality of the care that they provided. It's one thing to do, you know, to take a chest seal or a gauze or a tourniquet and put it on a wound, but to do it correctly when you have all that going on is tremendous, and because they were able to focus and do all of this, they saved this person's life, and for that, Daniel, Jared, and Josh are all receiving a lifesaving award. And finally, if I could have Officer David Mullen come forward. Also receiving this award is Officer Joseph Wellman, but he is on vacation and couldn't be with us tonight. This is from an incident in December of 2019 where he was dispatched, David and Joseph were both dispatched to an unresponsive woman that had possibly overdosed and was essentially deceased when they arrived. Waiting for the fire department to get there wouldn't do. It would be, there would be no chance of saving her. They quickly jumped in, and not only did they start performing CPR, but they administered a dose of Narcan that they had been recently issued and trained to apply. Through these efforts, they revived her to the point where when West Pierce Fire and Rescue got there, she was actually able to walk herself into the ambulance to be transported. This is somebody that went from being dead to actually walking to the ambulance, and this is thanks to Officers Mullen and Wellman, and again, just quick thinking and a willingness to act and not just wait for the fire department to get there. So, through their actions, they were able to save this person's life, and for that, Officer Mullen and Officer Wellman are receiving the lifesaving award. And if, as we're all lining up for pictures, I do want to point out that these, this is outstanding work that these officers did, and it's worthy of highlighting, but it's also just an example of what goes on in our department day in and day out. So, I'm proud to lead these officers and I'm proud to be able to highlight them tonight. Thank you, Mayor Anderson, and council members.
His Teklemarium's twin sisters were Alyssa's teammate, state championship team, and she would room with them because the distance runners were boring. We now move to public comments. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue pertinence to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on as a 30-second warning. Red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city residence, such as Linda Farmer, Lakewood, Washington. First person who has signed up is Dennis... Oh, Howgan, excuse me, Dennis.
Dennis Howgan, Lakewood, Washington. Diversity, diversity, diversity. I can notice there's diversity. Write me a check. You know what liberals say, you know, they've noticed these things, but the master, the master spoke, and that's Donald Trump on his State of the Union speech. In 112 applauses in 82 minutes, each line was a benefit to a diverse population. In other words, all kinds of different people received a benefit. Low unemployment rates for young blacks. for young blacks, low unemployment rates for women, on and on and on, stock market. And his speech was very much in line with his campaign. Just very down-to-earth, one thing after the other, for a diverse population. Something for the blacks, something for the Hispanics, something for the women, something for the young people. Delivery. Now, while he's doing this, and you know, this guy is tough, and he can do this with all of the slander that the left puts out. Nancy Pelosi has a tantrum, ripping up the State of the Union message, kind of like a two-year-old kid that throws his cereal against the wall. Now, recently, I did notice you had your meeting with the school board. It's very unlikely that 12 of you are going to make a difference with 11,000 kids. But in the next four years, you're going to see school choice become a reality. Nothing will get your attention like a parent walking out the door with dollars to another school. And, you know, I just have to say, you know, the president, he's just doing a heck of a job, and he's keeping his promises, and of course, he's a workaholic, so he gets three times more done than somebody else with the same policy. He just works from morning to night, and he keeps in touch with the people that support him, and he will win.
Next, we have Preston and Beth Carter.
Members of the council, I'm Preston Carter, and my wife Beth is here with me. We're members, we live in Lakewood. And if I could just, I'm a surgeon at Madigan, and I just wanted to add, as a citizen and as a surgeon, it's unfortunate that they've already left, but congratulations to the recipients of these awards. I mean, we in the medical profession really appreciate all the work that the first responders do to get the patients to us so that we can then move on with what we can do. So I just wanted to add my personal note of thanks on that. I'm here to speak to the Harwood-Glen Project, which we are budding landowners to. And this is the large project that's going on at the corner of Gravelly Lake Drive and Veterans Drive. And members of council will recall that about two years ago, more or less, there was the rezoning proposal by the city, which generated quite a bit of debate, and ultimately ended in a, what we, the homeowners, thought was a reasonable compromise, where from the original zoning proposal, which would have tripled the number of permissible homes, it cut that back to a more reasonable number, with the understanding that the development to take place in that area when it took place would be planned urban development, if that's the correct term, which, to our sense of it, was that there would be an overall design that would preserve the character of that project, of that area of Lakewood, which, as you all know, is heavily forested and has a lot of character along with the surrounding properties, not only ours. What has actually taken place is a complete clear cut, essentially, which we feel has really substantially altered the overall character. There were old growth trees. We were not understanding that they would all have to be saved. That obviously wasn't possible. But we thought that, much like Madeira, or Greystone, or Oakbrook, for that matter, that there would be some attempt to preserve some of these. And some of the trees that were sacrificed included the heritage Gary Oaks, mature, healthy trees. There were at least two over-century old, I counted the tree rings myself, Douglas fir. What's done is done. We can't change that. But I ask the city council to closely monitor the further development of this project in terms of its restoration, of what vegetation they intend to put in to do what can be done to start to restore the character that I feel has been severely impacted. Thank you.
Next is Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood Historical Society. A bit of sad news for the historical society. I know that the mayor knew Jim Curley, but he died on February 7th in his sleep. He was our treasurer, and anybody that knows any candidates for being a treasurer, we'd appreciate knowing. Second thing, I'll go back to 7-Eleven next door to my place. I don't look forward to having big gas tanks upheld from my property, a vent pipe right next to the fence of my property, and the also gang activity that seems to go along with 7-Elevens nowadays. I know 20 years ago, when we were first a city, that was the big place for exchanging drugs. You know, I spent years picking up needles and all kinds of things from my yard across from the skate park. And I just don't want to see that stuff coming. Another fast food restaurant, I don't have a problem with, but a 7-Eleven is just an invitation for crime. Also, the intersection there is extremely hazardous. Going to have two driveways going out on Stilicon Boulevard. Their other driveway, my driveway and their driveway, will come right out within 70 feet of the signal. Their other drive will be coming out on Fairlon, which is a little street next to the skate park, where there's racing, all kinds of things going on. My sister-in-law had her leg broken by some drag racers that decided to have a race going backwards, and they ran into her while she was in her yard on Fairlon. The roundabout there has had lots of accidents, cars that were turned over on their tops, slid down the road, other trucks that have jumped over the rocks in the traffic circle. It's just a mess down there, and trying to get a double, fuel trucks down through that road is going to be really something. Thank you.
That's all the people who've signed up to speak, but it doesn't preclude you from speaking at public comment if you wish to. If you wish to speak at public comment, please step forward to the microphone at this time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Hearing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of January 13th, 2020; B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 21st, 2020; C, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of January 27th, 2020; D, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of January 27th, 2020; E, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,596,282.84 for the period of December 16th, 2019 through January 15th, 2020; F, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $3,522,368.17 for the period of December 19th, 2019 through January 15th, 2020; G, motion number 20020-07, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Bark and Associates, Inc., to act as a consultant for the development of a Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, Planned Action and Hybrid Form Base Code; H, motion number 20020-08, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Stowe Development and Strategies in the amount of $52,485 for the Lakewood Landing and other redevelopment efforts; I, motion number 20020-09, authorizing the acceptance of a donation of a 2015 Toyota RAV4 from the National Insurance Crime Bureau for use related to auto theft investigations; J, ordinance number 729, terminating a utility easement on Lakewood Drive West between 75th Street West and 76th Street West; K, resolution number 20020-02, approving the transfer of the non-exclusive franchise of the City of Tacoma Department of Public Utilities Light Division, CLIC Network, to provide cable television services to Rainier Connect North, LLC; L, items filed in the office of the city clerk: One, Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 16th, 2019; Two, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 21st, 2019; Three, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of December 4th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to have removed?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item J.
Item J is removed. Are there any others? Now move to the consent agenda, less item J, to entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Then moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Whalen, that we adopt the consent agenda less item J. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to item J. Madam Clerk, would you please reread that?
Item J, ordinance number 729, terminating a utility easement on Lakewood Drive West between 75th Street West and 76th Street West.
Entertain a motion. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt ordinance number 729. Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance itself is actually a bit of housekeeping that's necessary to support a piece of economic development by the proper owner of that location. And I only wanted to comment about how this particular ordinance is necessary. We do not, in our comprehensive plan, have a policy that says whenever we do a vacation of a portion of right-of-way, that we will maintain and retain a utility easement. But it seems that over the past 20 years, that has become practice, whether there's a realistic need for a utility easement to be maintained or not. Recently, we maintained a utility easement when we did a vacation of 60 feet of walnut that was a dead end into a residential area. And we put into our actions where we vacated a piece of a right-of-way of a piece of a road that ran from Durango over to the railroad right-of-way. That... I'm concerned that we've just sort of, on autopilot, just automatically retaining utility easements without any actual serious consideration as to whether a utility easement is needed or likely. In this particular case, the property owner designed a project when they recognized that we had an easement rather than amending their project to accommodate the easement, came to the city and asked for the easement to be undone, which is what this ordinance does. And I think that this is an indication that as we go forward as a council, and I would ask that as we go, as staff goes forwards and we look at that vacating portions of right-of-way of things, that we not just automatically maintain utility easements unless there is some reasonable anticipation that there is some sort of city utility that might have a use for that property in the future, because I think it's become boilerplate to do that, and that we can adopt, should adopt, a more reasoned approach in the future. But again, like I said, I have no problem with ordinance 729 and will vote to approve it.
Sorry, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's not, Mayor.
New business? Motion number 2020-10, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2020-10, appointing a council member to serve on the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board.
As I think you may have discussed when I was in San Antonio, trying to get Clear Zone money for next year, the Puget Sound Regional Council is bound by its bylaws to reassess population distribution and representation on a periodic basis. In doing so, they added three cities to the executive board, one of which is Lakewood, which would get a designated member. This board is approximately 20 people. Other Pierce County representatives include cities and towns. I think Bill Pugh from Sumner is appointed by, I think it's the Pierce County Regional Council, too, hold that seat. Derek Young represents county council. Bruce Stanmyers, county executive, is the chair this year. And there is another representative who, oh, Mayor Woodard's from Tacoma, I think rounds out the Pierce County delegation. There is some importance to this, given that in the past, a member has voted against Pierce County's interest. So there's a need to coordinate and work toward some of our goals, like a system that is driven by the membership instead of driven by the staff, the base as a regional economic center for transportation funding, and building an alliance with the periphery of Seattle. So that's where we are. So I guess the first thing would be, given the time needed to serve on this, which is basically a monthly meeting in Seattle, which takes most of a morning and add two and a half hours of commuting to that. So it's a time commitment of almost a workday once a month. Before we do this, we have to kind of see who's available to do that.
Talked a little bit in your absence last week, and Mr. Branstadter was a vociferous no. So that makes it a little bit easy. I would be willing to do the alternate position, I think. Councilmember Farmer indicated she might be willing to do the alternate position. So it depends on who wants to be a primary.
And I have checked, I have the scheduling flexibility to hold the primary position, and I have been asked by some of the other members to participate, reluctantly as a voice crying in the wilderness sometimes, which, to give you an example of the mentality up there, the Transportation Policy Board meeting felt that, the comment was made when I attempted to remove from what essentially was nearly a consent agenda-type item, an amendment to the transportation... a consent agenda-type item, an amendment to the transportation plan, annual amendments, minor amendments, total minor amendments, the adjustments, a $1.1 billion cost increase on a sound transit project. Because I thought, for transparency's sake, something that's over a billion dollars should not be considered a minor amendment. And even though you can't change the funding on that, at least you should, for the public's sake, bring it up and discuss it as a major amendment. And I, it was attacked, literally, for suggesting that it wasn't a minor amendment. But it's a fun place to be. So with that, I'd open it up for motion, Mr. Simpson.
I have a que... Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have a question. Since I'm not Henry Kissinger, I'm not volunteering. And I know this is going to sound a bit, somewhat rhetorical, somewhat serious, somewhat the devil's advocate, but why do we want to have any representation on that council? When I have heard in this room on numerous occasions how we would rather not be a part of this?
That's an excellent question. One, there is an interest by the county executive and others to make a last best effort to create a coalition. Kitsap has kind of moved toward the Pierce County, some of these Pierce County has, a little bit from Snohomish. If you add up the votes, you still don't get to more than half. But at least there's enough to nudge this in a more reasonable direction. So that's the first one. And then the second one is if there's ever going to be a change where we get to have our own MPO, I think we need to show good faith in trying to participate and create a record of our position being advocated and being voted down for a Seattle solution. But that's the best I could come up with.
You don't have a response.
Eh?
And I'm, I'm somewhat...
It's better to play inside the tent than outside.
I'm definitely inside the tent.
At least you can see it coming.
Yeah, you can see it coming. And this is, this is meant in a spirit of lightheartedness. I know that the mayor's favorite president is a man by the name of Roosevelt, first named Theodore. Given what you just told me, how far do you think he'd have gotten in his presidency?
Yeah. He could start a war as Assistant Secretary of the Navy, so...
Not a good answer.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. Is the action that we need to take today to appoint both a primary and an alternate?
At least a primary, but we need to send both of them up because you can't vote unless there's council action and the first meeting is the 23rd, or the next meeting's the 27th.
Okay. In that case, then, then I would move that we appoint Don Anderson as our primary representative and Linda Farmer as our alternate representative.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Get my bus pass handy. Reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. And based on that last action, we'll go ahead and follow up with the Puget Sound Regional Council and let them know of your decision later this evening or first thing in the morning. The first update, I'd like to call up our long-range and strategic planning manager, Tiffany Spear, to give you an update on where we are, the city's efforts regarding Census 2020, which is a federal initiative. The city, like a number of cities in the Puget Sound region, are taking a proactive approach to getting the word out to our community on why it's important and valuable for them to participate. That's also in thanks, in part, to a $40,000 grant that we've been able to receive to help us finance the resources to be able to do that. Also, Ms. Spear, she gave a very similar presentation to coffee with the mayor this past Tuesday. So for those of you, actually, Councilmember Branstadter was there to see that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Tiffany Spear from the city staff. And I'm going to start with a video, so it might just kick right in. Let's see if it does. It does, but I don't know about volume. Okay.
It only happens once every 10 years.
It directly impacts our representation in government and the money that goes to our communities.
Our schools.
Our housing.
Our neighborhood programs.
Our lots.
So what is it?
The census.
A population count of America.
But it's much more than that.
It's the basis of distributing power and money.
From the government to our communities.
The unfortunate part is that a lot of us aren't counted.
And it's on us to change that.
When we aren't counted, our communities don't have their share.
For each person not counted, their community loses out on over $20,000 over 10 years. For a household or a family of five, that community loses out on over $100,000.
But we can change it.
When the census comes in the mail.
Fill it out.
Don't throw it out.
Or do it online.
And make sure you count everyone in the household.
Little ones, too.
Little ones, too.
The census begins in 2020. Most households will get a postcard in the mail next March telling them it's census time. And we're required to fill it out.
The council is used to determine how many congresspersons each state gets.
And to draw new congressional maps in 2021.
It's also used to draw maps for basically every level of government.
From the state legislature to school board.
So this is a huge opportunity for us to make a direct impact on our communities. It's critical that we are all counted.
So go ahead, take the pledge.
Pledge to be counted.
Pledge to be counted.
Pledge to be counted.
Because there's too much at stake, not.
I count.
I count.
I count.
I count.
We count.
Contamos.
We count.
We count.
Aníhna mahasivin, daiyitabunan.
We count.
I count!
So as that presentation just lays out very simply, this is something that's happening right now. There was a mention about next March, that's talking about this March. But you'll see there, beginning March 12, there's going to be notifications coming in the mail, just kind of as a precursor to everyone. Then, starting March 30 to April 1, that is when homeless counts will be made by the Census Bureau itself. And then April 1 is Census Day, meaning that is the time or the day that you're reporting where you are living. So even if you answer it early, which you will be able to do, the idea is that you're answering that on April 1, you will be dwelling at such and such a place. During the month of April, there'll be census takers visiting groups that are maybe not in a home by themselves, they're living on campus or at senior centers, or I believe there's also going to be some outreach done on JBLM. Then in May through July, there will be the follow-up to those places where there haven't been responses received yet. And so they'll be actually physically knocking on doors to say, is there anything we can do to help you answer? And then by the end of this year, there'll be some information provided to the president and Congress. And then about a year and a month from now is going to be when the redistricting process begins. And if you'll recall, the 2010 census is why we now have a 10th legislative district, which is represented by Congressman Heck. These are the questions that are going to be asked of anyone who responds, their address, whether they rent or own, phone number, the number of people at that address, name, gender, age and date of birth, race, Hispanic, Latino or Spanish origin, whether someone lives somewhere else, and then the relationship among those people. This is a map that just shows, in a nutshell, some areas in the city of Lakewood that are considered on the national level hardest to count, meaning they have a low response rate. And it probably wouldn't be surprising to you that it's over on the eastern side of the city, and then in fact, they do show part of JBLM as low response as well. But you'll see Springbrook, you'll see some other areas also within the city. And so the idea with what the city is doing with its $40,000 grant that the city manager mentioned is to help outreach through various groups, as well as the city staff itself, to some of these areas of the city. We're trying to get information out to neighborhood associations, to cultural groups, to faith-based groups, to provide information from them to their own, and hopefully then the message is received a little bit easier that way. And we'll be at a number of city events as well. So for instance, we'll be at the new night market, there'll be information provided at various public libraries, at the schools. So we're trying to figure out as many possible ways to get the word out to folks about how it's important to participate in the census. I already mentioned that staff is involved with this, but just a little more detail, I have been serving on the local government caucus group since last fall and am working at the council, or city manager's, direction with other staff on trying to get the word out. There was something in the most recent Lakewood Connections magazine. And then that grant, we have now got that finalized and we're starting work on what we can do with those dollars. Another thing that will be done with the grant is the purchase of laptops to take to various events where people can actually do their census response right there. And I think we may also have one here in City Hall on the first floor, just for if anybody is here and happens to want to respond, we'll be able to let them do that. So there will also be something convened called the Census Committee. And again, that's going to be as representative as we can find within the city from various groups and organizations that we think would be good words of mouth, ways to spread the word. We're going to be doing census training, both for our own staff, should people come to the front counter and just ask about that, they'll be able to provide them accurate information. We'll have the Lakewood Night Markets, Black History Month events. This last Saturday, there was a staff person at the Lakewood Public Library when they were doing their event there about get out the vote. They also had some information about census, for instance. And then I and Brian Humphries from Human Services are also working with Bryn Grimley in Communications to get information online and in as many ways as we can boost and promote it that way. So I'm going to show you one more video, which I think provides some great detail, oops, regarding why it's important to respond to the census. I hope this will work. Sorry, this takes me a second to get.
The 2020 census is a once-in-a-decade opportunity to inform data that directly affects everyone in Pierce County. I'm Ali Modaris, Director of Urban Studies and Assistant Chancellor for Community Engagement at the University of Washington Tacoma. Our Center for Applied Urban Research looked into how census numbers influence our daily lives in Pierce County. You would be amazed how many important decisions are driven by the census. Highway construction, train service and bus stops are located based on the number of people in a community and whether those residents use public transportation or drive their own cars. This information is captured by the census. Pierce Transit uses census numbers to figure out where bus service will expand. Based on current numbers, several outlying areas of Pierce County could be seeing new bus stops. But a 10% undercount in those areas could completely eliminate the possibility of getting easier access to public transportation. Creating a healthy environment for business to grow relies on an accurate census count. A major local medical provider described census data as pretty fundamental for compliance and for capturing information for Medicare and Medicaid grant applications. This medical provider also uses census data to determine where new clinics are located. A 10% undercount could make the difference in neighborhoods having easier access to healthcare or not. An accurate Pierce County census count has a direct impact on how much federal funding is allocated locally for things like Medicare, Head Start and affordable housing. In 2018, these local projects received grants and tax credits worth about $4 million. For example, community development block grants are distributed based on census data to weigh needs based on population, overcrowding and poverty. Block grants are used for projects around Pierce County, like the $448,000 that was awarded to the single-family rehabilitation program. The program offers interest-free loans to individuals earning less than 80% of the median household income to repair their homes. A 10% undercount could result in a funding shortfall of $747,000 for Pierce County, meaning less money to support thriving neighborhoods. Perhaps the most important decision made from the census is government representation. Population counts from the census drive redistricting on how many representatives we get at the county, state and national level. After the 2010 census, a legislative district boundary line was moved 300 feet. That was due to reported population changes captured by the census. The change meant the residents of the Theophs Waterway Apartments, who used to be in the same district as Kent, Fairway and Auburn, were moved to the district, including Tacoma. Filling out the census forms can bring you closer to your neighbors. But an undercount in Pierce County could translate to a loss of adequate representation. For example, a 17% undercount in the county is equivalent to the loss of an entire legislative district. Less representation in government, having to compete with more people to reach our representatives, or having a representative who no longer lives near the people they serve could all be the result of a significant undercount. The good news is, there's a very easy way to make sure our community thrives and gets the representation it deserves. Encourage and remind your colleagues, clients, friends and neighbors to participate in the census and then help them get their census form filled out and returned by Census Day 4/1st, 2020. This is our once-in-a-decade opportunity. Let them know you count.
So I'll just finish with going back to some of that information you saw about City of Lakewood specifically. This shows you on this map that there are several areas that are in that 0 to 60% return rate, which means there's a 0 to 40% potentially undercount in those areas of the city. So while that information in that video we just watched was Pierce County-wide, the same concept applies, where if you want to make sure that Lakewood is fully represented and is getting in turn those dollars and the representation, you want to have better turnout than those areas at least have done in the past for the city. So as I mentioned before, there's staff working on this already. You'll see us around at various events and social media outreach between now and when Census Day happens in April. And then also to encourage those that didn't respond by that date to do so by June. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from Ms. Spear?
I have a couple. What are we doing to coordinate with the school district to get the word out through them?
We are going to be reaching out to them and incorporating them into the Census Committee, which hasn't been convenient, but it will within the next couple of weeks.
So, yeah, my concern there is really the underreporting of this Hispanic population, which is concentrated in the areas which are low-return, generally living in extended family groups in apartments.
Right.
Some cautious of their immigration status and the fact that the 1 in 6 residents in Lakewood is Hispanic, slightly over 1/3 of the school district, children are Hispanic at 34%. And actually, I think at Clover Park High School, it may be the majority. So with the language barrier, it seems that the best way to penetrate is through the students, working backwards, so...
Yes, and there are going to be pieces of mail and social media done in various languages, including Spanish, so hopefully that'll assist as well. But we've also made a connection with the Latino Leadership Partnership. There's a, their executive director's going to be involved with our Census Committee as well.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank Ms. Spear for the presentation, but more so for all the efforts that have already been made to try to make this a good year, you know. When it first came on the console in 2010, there was nowhere near this level of effort to try to make the census a priority. It was just going to happen and we... It was just going to happen and we didn't do a yeoman's work on it to be able to go and do that. I would tell the rest of the council that Ms. Spear gave this presentation last, a week ago, when we had no coffee without the mayor at that session. But I will tell you, though, in that discussion with those folks from the community that were there, maybe the one thing that is there that is maybe difficult for us to do anything with is that military, active-duty military personnel are in a position of where they have to make choices about as they respond to the census. I know when I was a soldier, I always responded to the census based on my home of record and where I voted, which tended to be, you know, Illinois, and being able to go and do that. And military families that reside in Lakewood will have that same decision to make. The census doesn't ask you whether you're an active-duty military person, but it asks, where do you consider your home and your record in being able to go and do that? And you can't have two. Well, your husband and wife could each have a separate one, even though they're doing it. But that's a challenge that we will face, and we will lose some residents because they will report themselves as being from home. And that, and I really don't know what JBLM's take on how they would like folks to report or even what guidance they give. But I do think we are in a much better place to get the majority, particularly the English-language learner population that we have, to report more fully this time than 10 years ago.
It's interesting that you should mention that. I was in Guam on active duty in the 1980 census. They still did a quill pens back then. But the reporting there was, military were reporting as where they were stationed because there's a federal allocation of money based on how many active, or, excuse me, migrant by home of record. And so mine was my in-law's address. My wife was considered a resident of Guam because she was not on active duty and she had been there a year. So though I was reporting at her parents' address, she was reporting at her house in Guam. So it's kind of weird.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that we've got any clear information about what kind of guidance active-duty families are set to receive this year.
Any other questions? Thanks for your update.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Just a few more updates. On the state legislative front, the next critical path date is actually tomorrow, where bills must pass out of their respective chambers of origin. So that means actually the legislators are working tonight and probably well into tomorrow evening as well to accomplish what they need to do there. Did want to mention a couple of bills, one being House Bill 2804, which is the reauthorization of funding in support of local revitalization funding. That's a key initiative for us. And right now, there's $15 million on an annual basis allocated to that. And then the maximum amount per entity would be up to $1 million, so that would be 15 awards. And that would be $1 million for 20 years. And so we're also pursuing, we would prefer it to be 2 million, but we're just not going to get there, but so we'll work with 1 million. But we are pursuing an amendment, and we've requested Representatives Kilduff and Levitt to champion, and that is to include language in the bill that would allow these funds to be used to move a public facility, because we want to find a new home for Washita. So we're cautiously optimistic that they'll be able to make that floor, that amendment down on the floor. And then the other one, House Bill 2778, which is actually pure tax increment financing, is also moving forward. So knock on wood. Hopefully it'll get out of the House chamber, get over to the Senate, governor signs it and gets in front of the voters here in the near future. So that's what I wanted to report on, on the legislative, on the legislative front. You know, we just, earlier this evening, had, you know, some recognition of our police officers for, you know, just, really quite frankly, just a snapshot in time of some of the great work that they do day in and day out here in the Lakewood community. Another one I'd like to mention is, well, first of all, you might remember the tragedy last August where the barber Sunny, Pyong Sun Ryan, also known as Sunny, was viciously stabbed to death with scissors in her place of, in her place of business. Well, this morning, we learned that the suspect, Angel Martinez, age 42, pled guilty to aggravated murder for his role in that. He was actually the person that stabbed her to death. And he was sentenced to 50 years in prison. He will serve at least 45 of that, meaning that he will not be released until he's 87 years old. This was fantastic work, starting with patrol, all the way through our detectives and our special investigative units, as well as, would like to put a shout out for the deputy, I'm sorry, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and specifically DPA Terry Lane for their great work in bringing justice based on this heinous crime. So again, great work by LPD. So for a number of years, we've had a particular business here in town called Déjà Vu, the last of one of those types of businesses here dating back a number of decades. We learned today that the property was sold to a neighbor of theirs, the Buhan LLC, actually closed on Valentine's Day last Friday with a sale price of $1.89 million. We don't believe that they're going to lease it back to Déjà Vu for them to continue operations. We believe that they are going to use that property to expand their business opportunities and allow for even bigger and better things to happen in our international districts. I just wanted to pass that on to the council. The Pierce County Regional Council is going to have their annual General Assembly meeting this Thursday, and I know we have Deputy Mayor Wayland, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Bokey all attending. Does anybody else on council or the mayor? The mayor? Okay, sign up the mayor, please, wishes to attend. Oh, Councilmember Branstadter. Okay. Anybody else going once, going twice? Okay, we've got five of you going. Also attending will be Tiffany Spear Weston-Ot, who is our Capital Projects Manager, and David Buer, Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development. As a part of that, Lakewood will again this year be recognized with a Healthy Communities Platinum Award for our work on Colonial Plaza. So the deal is, is all five of you get up and accept that award, and hopefully somebody will be there. I've asked that somebody take some pictures of that, so we want to, we want to do that. You know, AWC was here a little bit earlier this evening, and another one of their programs that they have, kind of answers each of their basic operations, is what's called the AWC Center for Quality Communities. And one of the key programs there is providing scholarships to high school students as they move on to the next phase of their life. This has been a program that's been going on for about eight or nine years. And actually, early on, at least one, I think maybe two, students from the Lakewood community have been recipients of the scholarship in the past. Every year, your youth council takes the lead in putting their word out to review applications for this scholarship. This year is no different. They have received two, and so they're going to be reviewing them and making a recommendation to the mayor and the council on who they want to submit for scholarships. And then that scholarship has the potential to compete with, you know, all 281 cities and towns. It's usually a short list of about 30 or so, and then they select, I think about eight or nine, and then those individuals are recognized at the AWC Annual Conference that's held at the latter part of June. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. You know, we're a member of the Risk Management Pool, Washington Cities Insurance Authority. They do more than just insurance. One of the programs that they have is they have a mitigation, a risk mitigation grant program where cities or actually any of, mostly cities, can apply for funding in support of various programs. And so this year, we have submitted for, I think it's about a $10,000 or $15,000 grant in support of just some general sidewalk repair, as well as some portable speed radars. And so if we are awarded those grants, I will let you know. At your next regular meeting, this body will be considering a contract for improvements along Silicon Boulevard, the annual overlay, which will also include putting in stormwater improvements and curbs and gutters between Custer and Weller, pretty significant length of roadway there. And just wanted to let you know that the bids came in last week, actually both the engineers and the bids. So the bid is a little above the engineer's estimate, however, both are below what the allocated budget was. So again, reflecting, you know, very positive bidding environment. And so again, that'll be coming forward to you for your review and consideration as part of your next regular, regular meeting. As far as your calendar goes, I mentioned on Thursday, PCRC General Assembly. The following Thursday, Boys and Girls Club is having their annual Legacy of Hope event at the Hotel Murano. On March 4th, Communities and Schools here in Lakewood is going to have their annual Champions for Youth Breakfast over at the McGavick Center. March 5th, the EDB is going to be having their annual meeting, again at the, actually, not again, but at the Greater Tacoma Convention Center. The city has purchased a table, so if you have an interest in going and sitting at the city table, please, please let us know. And then March 19th, the Lakewood Youth Council is going to have their Youth Summit. March 27th is the 11th Annual Cops vs. Teachers Basketball Game over at Lakes High School. There'll be a raffle that will begin at 5:00 PM, followed by tip-off at 6:30. We're going to have a special guest, former Lakes High School and current Pittsburgh Steeler offensive lineman, Ron Banner's son.
Zach.
Zach, thank you. Number 75. Two, I knew that, I knew that. Don't tell him. And he'll be there to play against his dad, so that alone will be worth the price of admission. As you know, this annual activity is to raise funds in support of, you know, a number of public safety activities. This year, the money's going to go to support the family of Pierce County Deputy Cooper Dyson, his wife, his three-year-old son, and his newborn daughter. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. April 23rd, Lakeview Light and Power is having their 98th annual meeting here at City Hall. We are a member, so we get one vote. And I know in the past, Councilmember Branstadter has attended that. I don't think he's available this year, if I recall, so we'll need somebody from council. So it's April 23rd, I believe that's a Thursday. It's right here at City Hall at 6:30. 6:00 PM, yes, sir.
If you can't, I will.
Okay. And then we are in the process of lining up vendors for our Evening Market, which is going to kick off on April 17th and run through October over at Colonial Plaza. And then our regular Day Farmers Market is going to kick off on June 2nd. And of course, we have the big ribbon-cutting ceremony about 11:00 PM on June 2nd. So I know that's a lot on your calendar. Hopefully, we got all of this stuff on your calendar. If not, let me know. And with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Questions for the City Manager? If there are none, we'll go to Council Comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, I just want to say we really appreciate our police officers and what they go through on a daily basis, that we don't always get the reports on, we get updates and stuff, so we appreciate them. Just wanted to put that out there. And the other thing is, I serve on the MLK Committee, and the question is, do we want to continue with what we had this year or go back to the January dates for the Month of the King celebration? That was a question. We meet tomorrow, too. And the other part was, do we want to continue with the essays? I mean, I like the essays, so I would say.
Mr. Wayland.
Well, I think the essays are absolutely fine, because it gives the students something to chew on and actually practice their writing and incorporation of a theme. The thing that was nice in a sense is that we didn't have to go through a lengthy process of having the kids come up and read the essays. They were posted on the chart boards outside, so people could read them at their leisure, which I thought was just fine. So I'd be fine supporting the essays, and, you know, I'm flexible on the dates. I know that there's an issue as to whether some people felt it was more inclusive in the January dates versus the February dates, but...
As far as attendance, there wasn't a big difference.
Exactly. Yep, it's about the same.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, again, I kind of view the essays as kind of a committee decision, okay? And if they want to move into essays and/or move on to another means of communications that young people can do, that's fine. I have a preference to use the actual weekend of, the actual birthday of Dr. King, that I think that provides a greater focus on the total diversity of the city than incorporating it within a month that's targeted at a single element of that diversity.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with what I've heard concerning the essays, Mary. I think that should continue. With regard to whether it's February, January, I agree with Councilmember Branstadter. I think the man's birthday should be recognized as he should be recognized for what he did for this country, as are all other individuals in American history who have their days as
Any other comments?
Thank you so much, and I will take that forward. Thank you.
Once the comments were made about the PCRC Annual Meeting by the City Manager, I will be attending, and I'm fine.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the SARS-911 has narroweded the group of finalists for the Executive Director's position down to five. The national search, they come from Washington and three other states, that it's, they're actually going to be conducting some, those interviews the last week of the month, on the 28th. And Mr. Nitesh has agreed to delay his retirement by one month in order so that those interviews can happen, a new person can be identified, and that there won't be a need for an interim, interim director there to be able to go and do that. I appreciate the City Manager highlighting the Quality Communities Scholarship that's awarded through AWC. You know, for the past five years, we've contributed some money and thrown some money into a hat, and then the Lakewood First Lions Club has matched that, and we've been able to provide a small scholarship to the, to our nominee to be able to go and do that, so that they're assured of receiving something. And I'll collect those funds and be passing those on to the Lions Clubs for whoever match and whatever amount that comes out to be. That, I think that the last thing, I guess, is that on the 20th of this month is going to be the first meeting of the Tide Flat Subarea Plan Advisory Committee that I've agreed to serve on, and that you asked me to do that last November, when they're finally going to have their initial meeting to get organized with all of that thing. Just like us, they're getting ready to award a contract presumably to Burke for, to do the consultant work. the consultant work on that subarea plan. So I'll finally be able to chance to have something to report to you.
Okay. I have just registered for the EFN Hunger Walk on May 2nd, and if I would like to extend a friendly invitation to other folks, if you are interested in participating, I need two more people, and I'll actually have a team. It's Saturday, May 2nd. Also, the Pierce County Council is poised to actually make a determination on the mental health tax. I believe it's going before them on the 10th of March, but I'm curious, I just want to throw it out there, if, how we feel about a public show of support, whether it be a letter or, I don't know. I think it's something that we support them doing, and I would love to be able to show our support. So I just toss it out there for a discussion.
Yeah, my concern is not the 1/10th of 1% as much as having a plan to use it effectively. And we, I think, discussed that in the past, as to whether, as a council, we would have that option, but what could we do with its relatively small amount of money? Also, we discussed the possibility of upstreaming them if they actually were going to pass it, which I guess last week was that they won't. Who knows? There's a wild card there, so that we would have control of money and be say, well, if we agree with your plan, we'll chip in, as opposed to having it imposed on Lakewood and not having any say in how it's used. So I think we... We've got a little bit of time, but not much. Maybe we can discuss that as an agenda item next meeting on our study session docket. Mr. City Manager, can you put that on our study session docket? The mental health tax? It is? Okay.
We'll have some feedback from the committee, because the committee's supposed to be met today.
I wasn't monitoring what happened. I'll get a report tomorrow morning. Paul might know. It takes a supermajority, that's the real issue, so.
I listened in, just in case I got called in, and then... So they had two measures in front of them, and one was to do something at the council level, like create an office or something that would help. And I don't, and I must have been called out because I don't remember what they did on that, but the other one is going to go forward on March 10th. There were a number of questions that came up. They did do at least one amendment, and it was to sunset it in 2023. I think it's a, maybe it's a five-year sunset, three-year, five-year sunset. I'm not really helping too much here, but I think it was a three-year sunset. Other places have done one year, like when Spokane did it, they did it one year. And the thinking was, the major, the legislation itself is actually fairly complex. I think my county standards in that it includes a, within the legislation, a committee, and I think they did an amendment to that, too, to add another position. Lakewood would have permanent membership on this 16-member committee, I believe, Lakewood and Puyallup. There would be another, then another city. It'd be much like some other things, and so there would be Lakewood, Puyallup. The county would have three or four positions, and then there'd be another city's one. And there was some, there was some public comments that really the eastern side of the county would really like to know that they're going to get one of those other city ones. So you may see the addition of another, another city in there or something. There were some other public comments around the composition of the committee. There was, you know, a lot of very heartfelt testimony in favor, especially when it comes to helping youth. And so, you know, that, and a good portion of the wherethes of the ordinance are about youth and the lack of services for them. So I think that a lot of the discussion going forward will be around that. We'll see if they can get it done by the 10th. I don't know. It sounds like there's some amendments in the works besides the one they passed to do the sunset date. Committee changes whether or not it's going to be housed in the council office, which is a change in kind of how things would be done. The idea is that to get it done now, because the state only starts collecting sales tax on the quarter, so if you don't get it done now, if you wait a little bit, you're into the third quarter or even the, even the next quarter, even year end, right? So waiting on it. I couldn't tell, sitting there, I mean, at times, it looked like, wow, there might be some key votes that would be their way, but by the end, you're unsure about that, or at least I was. So I don't know that they'll get to the five.
And there are council members in one. Internal to the county, there's a problem, that there are council members who actually want to run the program, like their county commissioners, which some might say is contrary to the charter. I don't know the current form, yeah.
So, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only one thing I have to ask, and that is, I have an ask of this body. During our last council meeting in 2019, during council comments, I spoke about an email that we all received from Don Russell. And in my comments, I mentioned that there was a link in that email that contained a 369-page, 40-year review of the literature on the efficacy of alum treatments in bodies of water. And I believe before we came to a close at that meeting, we had a little bit of discussion about that. Several weeks ago, I got a text from an individual who asked to meet with me this evening. And Mr. Branstadter, who happened by, joined me in this. And this woman and this man represent a group called Friends of Wahop Lake, or FOWL. And they have a very nice presentation, which leads me to my ask. We didn't treat Wahop Lake last year because we missed the window, and I frankly was glad of that. And I'm wondering if this body would consider putting the treatment on hold for maybe a year, perhaps two. And I say this because, A, the science around alum treatment is not settled, as the review of the literature pointed out, and B, there is some argument to be made that Wahop is improving on its own. Now, I cannot give you hard science on that. I don't have good empirical data on that. But I'm, I was just curious. I'm going to stick my toe in the water here and ask if there is any willingness amongst you that we take another look at this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there free people to put on the agenda and do that?
I was just going to ask, what is the window for the treatment? Because if it's, we missed this year...
Mr. City Manager.
So this body has approved a contract with an agency or a company to do the treatment, and they're in the process of gearing up and moving forward on that. Matter of fact, the treatment could occur as early as the latter part of March or early April, just depending upon, you know, weather conditions and things along those lines. So we're moving forward again with the contract that you approved last year.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. You know, I am not particularly in favor of just delaying to just do a wait-and-see. I mean, last year, we missed the window. Last year was a very strange year for the lake, okay, and not normal. But I am open to hearing a presentation from the Public Works Engineering Director as to whether, what was, on the question of, is the lake curing itself, and do we need to move forward, or how he sees it. I'd certainly be open to agendizing that, to have him come and provide an engineering perspective.
I'd also like to hear from the city attorney as to our potential liability under the contract that's already been awarded.
Mayor and members of the council, I rarely say I'm happy to be called on, but I'm kind of glad that I got called on because there is something to be borne in mind at this stage of the process. Not only do you have a contract that's in place, but it's based on a process, and every decision that you make as a council is based on a certain process. And it's a process that provides access for people from all different perspectives to the decision being made. And from a legal perspective, if that process sort of falls to some later information that you get, and you don't reopen the whole process and go through the whole thing all over again, you're going to have a legal problem. But secondarily, let's say, okay, fine, we're going to reopen the whole thing. That reduces the chance that you're going to get meaningful participation because people start to realize that the process isn't really the process. The process will keep repeating until you get a certain outcome. And that will be one of the perceptions if the process never ends. It is important, when we're defending what the city does, and when we're defending contracts and other things that the city takes action on, that we demonstrate that there was a process that was there to be known. People will say they didn't know it, but we will point out that it was there to be known, and that that process was followed. And typically, in these situations, there are folks who feel like, but you didn't hear this most important piece. If that piece was put in during the process, it was there to be considered, and we assume that it's been considered by the council, that you considered everything that came before you. And if it doesn't come in, and I used to describe it to the council as a box, if you didn't get it in the box, then it doesn't get considered, even if it's one of the most critical pieces. So at the risk of sounding a little bit lectury, and I don't mean to come across that way, I do think that the process is critical, and it's one of those things that really doesn't matter until it really does matter, and I'm in a courtroom trying to explain why we decided that this one thing was going to wag our whole process. So obviously, you can make a different decision. You can open it up if you feel like it's that critical, but this is a situation that did get some fair amount of process.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the lecture. I have a question. I'm sorry, Heidi, I didn't mean to...
But no, there would be a price.
Yeah. And it's, if I understand you correctly, the process has precedent. Correct?
Correct.
Even if there is new information introduced after the process has been completed?
Let me answer it this way. It's not new information to the process. It's new information somewhere in the universe. It didn't go in the box. And so, just like in a trial...
Okay.
Where something happens, the only way that you get a new trial is if it's truly new information that somebody couldn't have possibly known, something that was secreted away and withheld from the process somehow, then you might get a new trial if you can prove all of that. But if it's, hey, I didn't realize that you didn't know X, that's not a sufficient ground to get you a new process.
Understood. Thank you.
Other subjects?
I'm done, sir.
Mr. Whalen.
In light of the time, I just want to say a couple of things. One, the recognition of police officers and responders today was fabulous and well-deserved. Number two, I was at the Public Art Chorette last week on the 11th, where they chat a little bit about public art process. The Arts Commission will bring more forward in their recommendations later this year when they meet with the council. And finally, I'm going to attend the Pierce County Regional Council Meeting on Thursday, so I'll see you there.
So a friendly early reminder, your annual F1 forms with the PDC are due April 15th, same as taxes. However, the warning, it's all new. You have to go back to the beginning, and it's more extensive. And when I put in a whole laundry list of stocks and then went back a page, they all disappeared. So just fair warning, it takes some time. Purportedly, you can't download anything from last year's like you used to be able to. Next year, they say this new program will allow you to do it, but only prospectively not.
You can't do it on paper.
And they once, I had to look up the ZIP code of a life insurance company I bought a policy from 40 years ago, or it wouldn't allow me to finish, because the ZIP code was a required cell.
I have the city manager on the address for the 403B, whatever the little return and things we have, like...
It's Washington, DC. I had to look that up, too. But it's painful experience, so just fair warning. So after I enjoyed myself and really, sorry to say, didn't miss you folks that much for two weeks in Hawaii, came back for a few days and went to the Association of Defense Communities Meeting in San Antonio with 800 of my closest friends and the SSMCP staff members. Bill Adamson and Colonel Sky Duncan, the Garrison Commander, and I were three of four people on a panel regarding the Clear Zone, which was one of six community innovations that were featured at a particular session. I'm bad with the breakouts. It was well-received. The, there were some decent ideas that came out of it, a lot of information on where D-SIP was. It's evolving. There's a lot of backroom wrangling and pushing and shoving going on, but it's basically moving in the right direction, it looks like. The good thing, the very good thing, I thought, was actually informal, talking with, about 15 minutes of FaceTime at a reception with Assistant Secretary of the Air Force for Installations, Energy, and Environment, John Henderson, who was the Chief of Staff, not the Chief of Staff, he was the XO as a Corps of Engineers Colonel when he was at First Corps, and he overlapped both. He was selected by General Bob Brown and then served most of his time here under Steve Lonzo. of his time here under Steve Lonzo. Thinks highly of this place, knows the lay of the land, knows what the problem is. He's the one who, you may remember one of our reports, we said, told his staff to de-dork it when our first meeting with him, and has the ultimate control over leftover O and M money at the end of the year, which is our principal source of funding for Clear Zone acquisitions on an annual basis next to REPI. And mostly social, but he asks, now, he says, now, we aren't done with that Clear Zone, you guys still, so we'll be, we'll be back annually asking for money. So that's what I thought, okay. So he's aware of it and generally on our side, I think. Couple of individuals in the community of note, today I was job shadowed by one of our youth council members, Gloria Arroya, bright young lady, junior at Clover Park High School. And I think her secret is she doesn't sleep, because of all the different things that she does. But we haven't got the required hours in yet, so we're going to do, do something else. But really, a talented young lady, she's already planning on applying for youth council next year, this is her first year. New neighbor, some of you may remember the name, new person in my neighborhood, former senior enlisted advisor to the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff and Command Sergeant Major of 42 and 1st Corps, John Wayne Troxel, is now my new neighbor. We're over and welcoming him in the neighborhood, starting consulting business, so we'll give him a time to let the dust settle and get his stuff unpacked before we impose on him. He's a kind of a force of nature. And he spent the last three years flying around the world with the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs as his aide or senior enlisted advisor. Basically, he was the senior enlisted person in the entire Department of Defense. And I think you've written about him coming back.
I did, I just did, yeah.
But he chose Lakewood. I'd like to say it's all Lakewood's fault, except he's got three of his kids here and grandkids in the area, so powerful magnet. When I was in San Antonio, speaking of local connections, I had half a day at the end, because I had a 7:00 PM flight. They fly at 6 o'clock in the morning or 7:00 PM for direct Alaska flights back. So I'm trying to find things I hadn't seen. I could see the alum out my hotel window. I went to Fort Sam Houston Army Museum. They have an equestrian cavalry group there, they have horses. And who's prominently posted on the wall when I come in, but recently retired Lieutenant General Jeff Buchanan, who was deputy commanding general out here as a two-star, who I tailgated with and won some money off of in Arizona versus Oregon basketball. And had went to Christ Solution Church while he was here. He was the immediate past commanding general there, so they have these pictures of a three-star riding around on a horse, very prominent in the first room. And went down a little ways, and they had the Philippine Scout exhibit. And the nearly life-size blown-up photograph is Sergeant, what was it, he was a master sergeant, I believe, when he retired, Jose Colugas Medal of Honor recipient, who's buried in Mountain View, and had a Medal of Honor display in his history of baton. So it was like, oh, homewake, I go to a place I've never been halfway around the country, and it's, it's a guy I knew personally and kind of a local hero. So that was kind of neat. He'd, an executive session and a closed session. And parliamentarian, should we come out and adjourn before the closed session, or do we need to?
That is my recommendation, yes.
So we will recess into executive session for, I added something, so approximately 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 42301101B to consider a selection of a site for the acquisition of real estate or lease or, by lease or purchase when the public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. And 42301101, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation, which the agency, the governing party or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. The council is not expected to take any action after that session, except to adjourn, after which we will have a closed session pursuant to RCW 4230144 to discuss employee relations. We are in recess.